Good evening. This is a meeting of the planning board of the Village Stop Street on Thursday evening, December 5. We have four items on our official agenda tonight. Item number two, which is 189 Broadway, a continuation of pre-submission conference. They've requested that we move them to the next meeting. So we have three items. The first item was minutes of our last meeting. I do not believe we have minutes prepared as of this point, so we will postpone that to our next meeting. One comment I would have administratively, the first, our meetings are held on the first Thursday of each month. The first Thursday in January is the second, and I would propose that we move the meeting to January 9th. Fortunately, it's a month where we have five Thursdays, so that we will continue on our schedule of every four weeks going forward. So I would move that we move our January meeting to January 9th. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item number two on our agenda is 189 Broadway, which is a continuation of a pre-submission conference. The applicant has asked that the continuation be continued to our next meeting. Item number three on our agenda is 23 Mary's Place, continuation of pre-submission conference for site plan review for proposed new driveway. Whenever you're ready is welcome. We're ready for you. Sorry, we just moved a little fast there.
So I was commissioned.
Would you make sure that you're in the microphone, please? Thank you.
My name is Sethi Maitri and I'm a professional engineer. I was commissioned by John Bussell to design and present a new driveway for the existing residence. And I guess this particular driveway back in the day existed with the original house. Because the original house also has a garage in the driveway and some surveys, old surveys from 1976 show the driveway as existing, but for a long time it was not used. So the access to the Temple Road needs to be changed and the neighbor, I guess, did a little different thing. So the mean, I guess, the new that we are proposing is this back out and of course to the driveway. This shared driveway is existing and maintained by the neighboring resident. I guess the question was with the review engineer about maintenance and of the shared driveway. So I think that was all established in court. I think currently, as far as I can understand, this portion will be maintained by the neighbor and the new addition will be maintained by the applicant. So they agreed to maintain this shared driveway in such manner. So in terms of, let's see, zoning for the proposed driveway. So when it comes to the zoning, only impervious coverage that would matter. And I think, let's see, I think the percentage was that it is allowed in this particular zone 55% of impervious surface. So currently it is, I believe, I believe it actually currently exists in just 13% and proposed 22% impervious coverage. Then when it comes to stormwater management, we are proposing that this entire segment on the Mr. Pease's property would be impervious asphalt. And also additionally, this last segment, which is, which would be like on the profile, because it needs to be flat, that segment of the driveway will also have two feet gravel storage bed, which the weight would work with the stormwater that any water that would be, I guess, forming on the driveway, just like on the regular lawn, it will be infiltrating into the surface. But additionally, we are providing gravel storage bed. So in that calculation, we are looking as if that entire driveway would be impervious. So for this entire amount, as if that would be impervious, which is not. So we are providing additional storage so that for entire water quality volume and all the way up to the community storm event, you know, the water will be stored and accommodated on the site. Then another aspect would be the geometry and especially, I guess, geometry and standards for this shared driveway portion. So we were looking at last very cold and with, I would say, some of these houses do have design standards. And this engineers go to the next available standard, which in this case is residential driveway design standard. So what we are seeing is that up to four residents, up to four building units is considered a residential driveway as a width sort of requirement, nine to 12 feet. So for this shared driveway, we do, we do actually comply with that requirement. And I know there was back and forth discussion about that. Currently, I guess this portion is, this portion, you know, along this property is 13 feet. But we are not proposing to do the, so the only work that it will be, only the entrance in connection with this existing shared driveway. I guess, let's see. So when it comes to the slopes, the current, let's say, this clean driveway, if you could call it, has approximately 10% slope. So we are slightly leveling it and basically the entire amount, it would be asphalt layer four inches plus, I guess, in that level, more level, to make it to 9% slope all the way to this particular where the asphalt takes place. And obviously, the existing driveway is whatever it is, now that are like 6%, 4% slopes with the existing shared driveway portion. So which is within the norms as in what it would be recommended. Any other questions?
Well, thank you. That's very good. This has been an interesting application, I think, for the board to look at because as we looked into it, it was both the construction of it and so on. And I think the village engineer has given you a lot of comments on behalf of the board for that. But it also brought to our attention again, the fact that this is basically over a DMAP street by the village, and that has certain implications too. And so we've asked the village attorney, obviously, to look at that and see how that plays into this application.
Yeah, I think notably, the whole stretch behind the both properties is a DMAP'd public street, a DMAP village street. It's village land technically, so any improvements that are made on it will have to be approved by the Board of Trustees. Alternatively, the Board of Trustees can offer it, you know, to be conveyed to the property owners to the extent it's behind their properties. But that also, that would be half of the street going up and half of the street going down. Does that make sense?
It does, yeah. I think, I think this.
Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. If you're going to speak, please speak on the microphone.
I think that's.
Introduce yourself.
You have mistaken, I think the Supreme Court precedent on this is that in that court procedure, all of the abutting neighbors to the paper street would have to make a motion and all agree. If there's any disagreement, it doesn't go through. That's been case precedent prior to, you know, that's been carried over in many municipalities in Westchester. That's how it works. So I understand what you're saying regarding that it would revert, it doesn't automatically revert. Everyone that abuts that, all the neighbors have to agree and be, and say, yes, I will take my portion of that. If there's any disagreement, it doesn't work. That's been the case precedent.
Well, I'm not sure. I think if, if some of the neighbors, for example, not you and not your neighbor, the ones below, say they don't want it, I think it can be conveyed in full to.
Oh, then it could be conveyed in full to.
Correct.
Other adjoining members.
Correct.
In other words, yes, that, that's fine. If they bow out, then it could be conveyed.
Right, right.
Yes, absolutely.
So, so, you know, the issue of any work being done on that, on that stretch of land has to be resolved by the trustees either in granting permission to, you know, to make these improvements or conveying the property, you know.
Right. And which all of us would have to agree.
Right.
We unanimous.
Basically, yeah.
So, I mean, but as of right now, it's owned by the village.
That's right.
It's completely in the village's domain to permit the extension if they so see it, you know.
Correct.
And in fact, I think there's quite a bit of case precedent that on a vacant road, it's, I think it's considered egregious to not allow someone to access his driveway off a vacant road. And there's been case precedent. I brought one of the cases forward. I don't want to bore you with it, but it was a recent case.
If you.
I'll do a little homework, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
If you'd like, you can have your attorney send it to me.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, definitely.
That'd be fine, that's fine.
He might show up, he was just at his daughter's recital.
Right.
If he can make it, he'll be here. But he would just tell you the same and he could give you the.
Sure.
The other case number.
If the Board of Trustees decides to convey it to the neighbors or what, you know, make it available, how does that work? Somebody walks around and says to the neighbors, you send them an official document or what?
There'd be, yeah, there'd be official notice to everybody. And they're, you know, it's, it's supposed to be sold for some value, for fair value. I'm not quite sure what the value of, you know, that strip would be, but that would have to be determined. We need, you know, the village, we need surveys, you know, have surveys prepared, descriptions of the property, so when they, when it is conveyed, it's conveyed by a deed with a description. So, so the people receiving it know what they're getting, you know.
And that, that paper street actually goes across the whole bottom of your, or borders on the bottom of your property, right?
Right, it goes.
And the neighbor's property.
All the way over to the other street.
Yeah.
It goes from Temple all the way across to this. It goes from here all the way from Temple all the way to Lazard, which will be over here.
Gotcha. So how many, how many owners are adjacent to that?
I'd have to say Hank's down here, neighbor here, and then probably about five neighbors here. Yeah, probably about eight people, at least.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he has a whole bunch of them.
And do any of them have access from that paper street right now?
Um, yeah, so Hank's using this over here as his personal storage for his wood, which is nobody, you know, we're not using it right now. But, so he has access. This, my neighbor right here, she has access through her backyard if she so wants to use it. But right now, it's just kind of used for leaves and stuff like that on this side.
I think she's talking about vehicle access. So, yes, everybody has access on foot. So what happens is, just like a sidewalk, where you become responsible for the sidewalk adjacent in front of your property, that, that's the way it would be conveyed. So where your property lines transect the, the village paper road, that would be, from the midpoint of that road, that would be the portion that you'd be able to buy. So this person and that person, then this person and that person. So then the questions be if somebody denies or decides not to buy their portion, then the person on the other side of that half would then be able to buy it. And then if that person denies it, then who's next? So those are the things that need to be worked out. The, the thing is, engineering still, and stormwater retention still needs to be worked out here by a village engineer and this board. And then the decision to be able to improve and use this would go to the Board of Trustees.
So right now, 14 Temple Road and whoever's on the other side of that own this piece of the paper street prior to where he wants to put the driveway? Is that what you're saying?
They don't own it.
They don't own it. The village owns it.
They have the ability to.
They may have been using it and accessing their property going through it prior to the DMapping, but they don't own it at this point.
Okay. So technically, nobody's allowed to build on it or utilize it.
Correct. And the idea.
At this point.
And the idea would be to, to offer it, you know, to them and then as it comes down to Mr. Pease and then as it goes beyond, you know, to the, to the adjacent property owners all the way down. You know, the idea also in the village is to get rid of all of these pieces of land because they don't, you know, serve the village any, any, any function. The idea is to clean up, clean up the village map and.
You know, lots of paper roads in Doms.
Oh, yeah.
They know, yes, I know.
Yeah.
And the responsibility for those trees on those paper roads falls on the village.
There's a whole list in the resolution of DMapping. There's a lot of streets.
I mean, and this property itself, I mean, I got permission from your highway department. I removed probably no less with your permission, with your highway department's permission, six dangerous trees that I did at my expense. So the city didn't incur those expenses I did. And they were huge trees I took down for you guys. So, you know, at my expense. And really, the city should have covered, the village should have covered that. But as far as this, I mean, the, I went, unfortunately, I had a big battle with my neighbor where he claimed he owned your paper, your paper road, and that was proven completely false. So we settled on, you know, out of court, so we didn't have to pay him 200,000 damages. So I do have the right to use this per the Supreme Court judge. I can use my driveway any day of the week. All I'm here to do is just pave it. There's no, there's no doubt that I can't use it. That's been decided in the Supreme Court. I'm just trying to pave it to improve it.
When you say, when you say use it, what do you mean? Use what?
To pave it.
No, use what?
My driveway, my existing driveway.
Your existing driveway on your lot.
That's correct, on my lot.
Correct.
I'm allowed to use my existing driveway.
But you can't get to it.
But, but not the paper street?
No, I'm allowed to use it and exit through the paper street.
You, you couldn't have gotten that in a decision against your neighbor.
Uh, we, that, that's a.
No, your stipulation said that they won't block it.
Right, they cannot block.
Right, but you didn't get a determination by a court that says you have an absolute right to use it. It's a village, it's a DMAP village street.
Right.
Okay, so you're, you are correct that your neighbor can't prevent you from using it.
Correct.
But the village could prevent you from using it.
Uh, yes.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe.
I'm just saying maybe.
And there's, there's not a lot of precedent.
No, no.
You know, we could say, hey, you can't use your driveway.
And that's not, that's not the, that's not the point we were, we were raising.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. The, the point was, you know, improvement's being made in it and it is village property. So I'm, I'm just clarifying that.
No, I got you. But, you know, as a practical matter, this has been here for 70-plus years and the water, if we're talking about drainage, the drainage has never been an issue in 70-plus years. In fact, with the pervious pavement that we're proposing with the stones, the large amount of stones and multiple layers, we're improving what's already there, which was never a problem in the last 70 years. So, you know, from a common sense point, we're only making it better. We're not making it worse. And it's easier for me to use my driveway, my existing driveway. So that's the real.
I mean pragmatically, that may, that may not be the case, subject engineering, but we have to look at it from the other point of view is the village owns these paper streets. The village should be going, we hope, will go forward and take, take action to make them available to the adjacent landowners. So that, that may or may not change the ability of you to use your current driveway if you don't own the downhill half.
Well, you know, that's to be debated. From what I see, from the attorneys that I've consulted, it would almost be, I think it would be a losing battle to say, hey, Mr. Pease, your driveway is now permanent. I don't think that that is even possible. I don't think so.
Well, I'm not looking at it from even a legal point of view. I'm looking at it from having an appropriate driveway over land that you own.
Right. I mean, when these were DMAP'd, the problem was, it was before all of you were on the board. This should, should not have been DMAP'd when you have adjoining properties using the driveway. This was a mistake to DMAP this. You only DMAP them when nobody's accessing the rear of the property. It was just a mistake. I mean, in practicality, this, this one shouldn't have been.
Can't, I can't.
Just like on Belvin and Sheldon, on those, you're not going to just tell all those people, hey, you can't get to your driveways. There's 22 houses.
We, we did a site survey this.
Oh, you have a site survey in mind, definitely.
No, no, I mean, we, we looked at this property, what is, a couple of years ago.
Oh, yeah, you were at the site, yeah, you did say this.
Probably more like five years ago.
Five years ago, but there's.
I think it was three, I want.
There wasn't that. I mean, that drive, that drive was not being used at that time. I mean, it's.
Well, I had just bought the property at the time of the site.
It hadn't been used quite a while, there were trees in it and stuff.
No, no, this, this area right here, going from this point straight up, there's no trees. The tree line is right here.
It's inside, it's.
Right, that's on the outside of the driveway. As a matter of fact, I've removed a lot of the dead and dying trees with the tree permanent to prevent anyone from getting hurt. I mean, but I had to be done.
So I'm a little confused. If we approve it, you know, to have him to pave his driveway, but then it's an X factor to actually get to the driveway on the paper map street, I mean, what, what's, what's happening here?
Well, one way or the other, you know, one board would, could condition their approval on the other board. So, you know, if, if you wanted to approve the driveway, you could approve the driveway subject to the condition that Mr. Pease obtained, you know, permission from the, from the Board of Trustees to build his, you know, you know.
Extinction.
Exactly, exactly.
Are there engineering issues that have not been addressed?
Uh, we submitted our list, applicant responded, and I didn't have a chance to look at her responses.
Seems bad.
Um, I'm not, we are generally opposed to general. Ten years later, they put that ceiling on it and it's no longer permeable asphalt. It's not, it becomes, it becomes permanent asphalt. So what we said in our letter was, you really need to have some type of backup mechanism. And as you heard earlier, they said, well, I've got two foot of gravel, but that comes along with how deep, how deep is rock? How deep is it impervious layer? Is it going to go into the ground? Is it going to end up, you know, going into the ground to a neighbor's place? And then you put drainage now, you put drainage inside of the village right of way, now who maintains that? Does the village maintain that? It becomes, there's some other complications to it. So I haven't, I haven't read, excuse me, I haven't read the applicant's responses yet, but those are the things that.
The dry well would have to be on the applicant's property, 10 feet away from foundation or property line. And the pervas pavement still has a percentage of impermeability. So just to say this is pervious, it doesn't mean that the rainfall just goes through it. It goes through a percentage. So I still need to factor in the percentage of impermeability and put the retention there at all property.
Do you have a copy or do you want us to?
So that's what we need to approve. And then he needs to go to the Board of Trustees to get approval to improve anything on the village property.
And then the other part of this too is, what happens when that fails? Where does the water, does it end up on somebody's yard, property? So what's, what is downstream of this? So that needs to be carefully looked at as well. So overflow me, anything downstream. So if you're.
We are not changing any drainage pathways. The way it's going, the way it's going right now, as you can see, it's raining towards direction that you're concerned is shown in the, it's somewhere here. Before this proposal, let's say, there is a, let's say, earth and driveway, right? Or like lawn or whatever you would call this. So now we have a pervious asphalt, but we are looking at it with the, with the engineering calculations as if that would be impervious, like I said. So the storage in this area, right? It's, this area has two feet deep gravel. And for that, obviously, the design requires it flat, so we flattened the slopes, so it's only half a cent slope. But this portion, nine and half. The storage of it for this driveway as if that would be pervious, though it is pervious. So basically, all the water that's going to drain to the, additional water also, just as presently is, is going to be flowing, but also will have capability to be detained, you know, detention, some water detention practice. Else, whatever, of course, the property, the way currently, you know, the property owner is not supposed to detain all the water that drops on, on.
So the water that flows across is still going to continue to flow. I mean, specific depth of gravel below the end of the driveway to retain water from driveway, but the way it gets to that is through the pavement. But what to, to Mr.'s point is what happens when the paper is no longer per, gravel sump? So a, into a dry well works much better than just trying to let it permeate through a semi-permeable driveway into a gravel pit.
Well, in general, like I said, I could actually let, you know, you see the brochure, and this is from your Department of Transportation. This product, or pervious pavement, actually has been used for 30 years. Moving to be the best practice, it's low impact. Or, or impact environment, this is a, everything is turning towards this and you cannot, like you did, unless you, you do a portion of greenness in. Basically, in engineering, in environmental engineering.
Send that to Mr. Palmer and myself?
And this is available right now. This is from.
I'll stand there.
And in my response, I'm actually stating from, from here, which it says. And in my response, I'm, I'm actually stating from, from here, which it says, uh, as, as a result, they are recognized as the best practice by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and many state agencies, and it says, you know, New Jersey, uh, some other, you know, states. So, uh, this is not something that to be avoided or to be afraid of. Yes, I mean, how would it get, I guess, it does need to be maintained, and we could perhaps instill some kind of a, uh, you know, inlet that to divert every... That would be... Entrance, you know, so would you please that for...
If I could just interrupt for a second, I think it's very good to have a good lesson in drainage and different calculations and stuff. Before the, uh, planning board, we have an application that's in pre-submission state. We could now go on to set a public hearing for it. Or we could request that we get, um, the application, go back in, in front of the Board of Trustees to see if they will consider, uh, either selling or permitting, uh, the actual use of the prop, village property. Or we could, um, I don't, those are the two options I can think of. Either we can set the public hearing, I guess we could do both. We could set the public hearing and refer to the village at the same time to request, uh, that they're...
Well, but I have a question about this. I mean, can we approve a project? We can only approve the part that's on their property, right? So, then, don't they have to come back for a second process to get approval for the section on the...
Approve a contingent on what our trustees...
No, what I was suggesting is that you could approve it on the assumption that the, that the Board of Trustees will, will also...
So, we can do the whole thing?
Would be contingent upon them getting that approval, and if the Board of Trustees doesn't, they'll have to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd sound great. But if... Public hearing and... But if we approve it, and then the Board of Trustees approve it, they don't have to come back.
And you approve, I was not, then I would be able to pave it. If the Board of Trustees approve it, you approve it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, except... But the public hearing, I mean, you want to hear from the public to see if they...
Well, you still need a public hearing, of course.
And if anybody, all the, all the adjoining landowners come, you can, you can badger them into, you know, giving up their preference.
Well, one of the things...
Well, I, I think, do you, do, I, I'm hoping you realize, all of this section from, from temple all the way up to right above my property is already paved with pervious, I mean, uh, a drainage right here with a cul-de-sac. So, I know there was a lot of concern, but you have drainage and you have cul-de-sac. So, as far as the drainage issue, any, God forbid, there was some type of water that came down... In addition to all of our infrastructure that we're building with all the gravel, the water's being captured now for the last 70-plus years. It's not going to get worse. I mean, we have more coverage there than most driveways around, so it's, I, I don't think that that's really a big issue. From a practical standpoint, this is all paved now, and, and, and you do have a cul-de-sac at the bottom. You know, that was designed and that pervious building inspector, he knew what was going on, this was all done under your auspices.
No permits.
So, if that, um, portion of your... Now, um, it, type of painting on it.
Yes.
Um, what, who maintains that if... Assuming half of that would be from the owners here and the other half from the owners here at this point, but then if they decide not to own that, then possibly you could take it over. Who...
Well, let's just...
Because if, if that's your access to...
Wait, your stipulation with your neighbor...
If, if he...
He's got it.
Mr. Pisa, it's yours, it's yours, but...
But he only maintains half of it.
But the interesting thing is, his, his driveway, his garage is... So, he came up with that agreement. Portion, because he accesses this, I'm maintaining... Proposeable. I would have to maintain that portion, because I'm using that portion, not my... So, he...
Thank you.
We've identified, uh, the legal issues and the engineering issue. I would move that we call for a public hearing in our next meeting. Is there a second? All in favor? I mean, hold... Village attorney with the village will examine, you know, like to go...
For him to go to the Board of Trustees? Well, I mean, you could...
Just so he not do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have to, I have to get together with my colleague at the, with the Board of Trustees and determine how... Globally. This isn't the only strip. We'll, we'll try to move as quickly as possible for your benefit, but...
You have a lot of paper roads to...
That's, yeah, I mean, so there has to be a process for dealing with it, not that we can't...
I mean, if, if, you know, practicality, between Sherman and Belden, that's a mess there, and it's a hazard. You have 22 houses using paper roads and like dirt. I mean, with holes in them, and it's just terrible. Really, they should all be paved, and a solution should be come up with, and it would be great. But I hope, for me, I'm...
We'll put it into motion for you, then.
I'm only two, I'm only two houses on mine. I mean, mine's the east one. Those are 22 houses.
I know, I know this.
I appreciate it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we have no further business, I would move we adjourn.
No, no, we have one thing.
No, no, what do we do?
The zoning code, uh...
Retract my motion. Now, this is the zoning code as relates to, uh...
The townhouse, the...
Right, so there were...
Dwight's memo?
So, there were, right, so Dwight's memo.
Yeah, sorry.
So, what, effectively, what we needed to do was, was get this board's opinion as to whether or not these inconsistencies were merely typos, if you will. For example, um, there's language in the code about the townhouses in the MDR-1, I think, but it didn't make it onto the table. So, the question was, is, should it be on the table? You know, assuming it was an oversight, um, you know, I guess the trustees are asking this board for its opinion, because you deal with it perhaps more regularly than they do. And then, there were two other items that George had identified also, two other questions that we had.
Oh, well, Dwight, actually.
Dwight, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, uh, the, back to the MDR-1 zone, the, the townhouses, uh, should have been detailed in section 300 dash 35A to B1. And, uh, to match it up with what's at the table, so that the recommendation from the planning board would be that the townhouses should be, that they should be brought to consistency, so that the townhouses in both sections, table and in that section I just cited. The MDR map, one map correction, I wanted to double-check with Brian. This came from a letter that Patty had submitted, uh, calling into question where the MDR-1 boundaries were. And when I looked at it, I thought that it was correct. So, he's, it's a, he's got, um, a line separating the MDR-1 zone district on Maple Street, and it should have been running to the back of the building, to the back of the properties along that section. So, that would be a minor map correction. The third item that we brought before you requires a little bit of analysis, I think. It says, um, again, these are the three items that were referred to us by the Board, Board of Trustees. The third item, um, people had asked for more than just the three items, but the ones that were referred to us for action were, uh, a recommendation as to whether the, the MDR-2 zone, um, uh, whether we needed to amend the dimensional tables to bring them into compliance with the actual dimensions of the, of property as developed. And to do that, I think we actually need to go out and, um, analyze what are the typical dimensions within the MDR-2 zone, and then be able to make a recommendation to the board. Act on... Allowing townhouses in the MDR-1 zone, directing the, the, uh, the, uh, the sections that are not in... amended by Mr. Stein-Schneider to bring the backside properties into compliance with the MDR-1 zones.
Right, Dwight, it seems like that last, that third... It's actually, has to be... Yeah, right. So, I, I think the question is, are the first two...
100% zoning ordinance system to be re-drafted and brought forward. So, you always find little stuff like this, and these are two of the map districts.
And, yeah, but... What do we think? The third thing, should we literally do a field trip? What do you think?
Yeah, I would think, I don't think there's any great rush on it, but I, it may be even a better weather thing, I don't know, but, or, um, you know, to go out and actually, property by property, you can use, Patty submitted a, a map showing the building lots as they're developed, that's helpful. But, yeah, I, you can't do it without, here, you can't do it without going out and, and actually viewing the sites and seeing what's there, and then take a look at the zoning. So, that would be a field trip for the planning board. Nothing much more fun than that. But it, it can't wait for better weather, I think, unless there's some emergency that I'm not aware of. I think it's just, it's something that we should definitely tangle with. But the other two, I think we could make a recommendation to the board and clean them.
The, with MDR-1 townhouse, you know, I did that little PowerPoint years ago.
I remember.
I was, I was analyzing what, and this, this all started walking past Washington's headquarters on the aqueduct, which is the townhouses in the MDR-1 zone. And it's, it just totally blocked the view, and some of the best views from the aqueduct. So, my concern was that little, starting with that little strip of MDR-1 that goes south from Livingston, which are two narrow, you know, two narrow strips. There's, there's, uh, Cabrini on, on the west side, on the east side is just, you know, house, 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 house. And it, that all became... That, you know, that script of the aqueduct would be, the, the view would be gone. So, then I looked at the other MDR-1 zones, some of which were, they were already townhouses, and it was fine, and other places where, you know, it was questionable. So, I think, uh, you know, townhouse permission was added to the language that should have, you know, subject to division plan. Viewshed.
Viewshed, for sure, yeah.
Well, that becomes our job when, I mean, and it's, and then, when it comes before us, then we have to look at the vision plan and the view corridors that have been established and make sure to the best extent feasible that they've been protected or complied with. But the zoning ordinance itself really, you can't, you, you don't want to have, change that out of the order. So, the reverse would be, say, okay, townhouses are not in the MDR-1 zone, and you have all these non-conforming...
Well, but what percentage of it is townhouses, and what percentage is not?
I don't have...
There's quite a few.
But I mean, there are MDR-1 zones all over the place here.
I know, yeah, Livingston Ridge is also a townhouse, it's all the way, you know, little, they've blocked a lot of the years.
Right, but that, you know, we're talking about two or three out of thousands.
But there's also townhouses on, uh, the, uh, MDR-1 zone, it's just north of the intersection of...
Do you have a couple of the Hiller?
We just approved three on 40 Devol.
Of East to West, so...
They're all over the place. To, to quantify the percentage, I don't think that's, uh, appropriate here. I mean, we want to look at how many two families there are and all of that. It's appropriate because they are there, they fit into the neighborhoods. We've been approving them all over, we just did a couple of weeks ago. The problem was, it was allowed in the table, the verbiage wasn't put into the description in the code. We're... And, and disallow it in the code, in the verbiage, would then be, all right, we're trying to stop something from happening that's already happened all over in this zone. So, now, we're working against one developer, and that's the way it'll be seen in court.
Trustee's response, I think they wanted to know if it was just a, you know, I think they recognize that it's in one place, but it should have been in the other as well.
Yeah, yeah.
A mistake on the map, uh, just because nothing on that side of the street, oh, F4. It's, it's MDR-1 all the way, so... A mistake.
Yeah.
And MDR-2, code development. Work on that, we have to look at it closely. Bridges, we need appropriate to those neighborhoods, or that one neighborhood, because it's only one. That's development, that's not something we can... The other two things we could just say to the Board of Trustees... Need to be corrected.
Um, if, um, motion to do that, I will draft up a short, uh, recommendation from the planning, to everybody, on those two items, I can draft up something to be circulated.
Okay, uh, why would move that? I say... You would like to be congratulated?
Just clarification, nothing else, is another property, which was 443 Broadway, which was included in the MDR zone instead of the Broadway.
The Board of Trustees did not deem to send that to us.
Yeah. Okay, I got it.
Excluding non-conforming, or...
But it would be conforming if it was in the Broadway, it's the only house that's not in the Broadway zone.
But it's, but it's not here now. It's not, it's not... Yeah, yeah.
All right, there's a motion. I think we know what the motion is.
And you have a second for Mr. Brosnan?
Favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Great. Okay, can I move to adjourn now?
Second.